Hello, everyone. Good evening. Oh, that's really loud. This is our second Planning Zonier Board Land Use Plan Update Workshop, and I just want to thank you all for coming out tonight and helping us with this process. Tonight's agenda is fairly short, or it's fairly simple, really. It's, we're going to dive into the Existing Conditions Report and Trends and Influences Summary Memorandum. Michio Murakishi from House of Levine is with us tonight. He's going to talk about the highlights in the reports, which hopefully you all had a chance to review. They were in your packets. And basically, this sort of sets the foundation of information that we're going to need to dive into our second activity, which is going to be community visioning. And I will explain later this evening how that activity is going to work. Hopefully, it's pretty straightforward and maybe even fun. And then, we will sort of also make time for questions for both the reports and for anything else you have, any questions you have about the actual visioning exercise itself. But without further ado, I'm going to go ahead and hand it over to Michio to talk through the reports.
Okay, thanks, Brad. So, we are very happy to be back here. I think the last time we spoke with this group was in the springtime. And I much prefer speaking to a group when I've actually given them something to look at. And we were just starting out the process back in the spring. So, as Brad mentioned, I'm here to talk about these two documents tonight, the Existing Conditions Report and Trends and Influences Summary Memorandum. So, I'd like to spend about maybe 20 minutes here just going through some of the highlights of both of these reports. I know it's a lot of text, there's a lot of pages here, so I want to make sure I just touch on some of the highlights. So again, my name is Michio Murakishi with House of Levine. We have been working on the project now for probably about seven months. So in terms of tonight's meeting, I know Brad went over this a bit, but basically, kind of want to hit five key topic areas. Just kind of catch you up, number one, on where we are in the project. Secondly, touch on some of the highlights of the Existing Conditions Report and Trends and Influences Summary Memo. And then, I think the majority of our time actually tonight will be spent with this visioning exercise. So, what you have in store for you has something to do with colored markers and maps. I've given you a little clue there, some hints there on the table. And then, we'll talk about conclusions and next steps, and obviously, take any of your questions. So, in terms of where we are in the project, Phases one and two are complete for the most part. Phase two was our initial upfront outreach and community engagement. I'll get a bit into that when we start talking about the Existing Conditions Report. But we have employed a very robust outreach process here in Mooresville with much success. And we are going to continue to do some of that outreach as well as we had into visioning, which is Phase four. Phase five, which will start pretty soon, but will really start to dig into it in the fall, will be the subarea plans. Phase six, then, will be spring of next year. And that's basically where we start to develop the core elements of what will end up being the new land use plan. And then, plan documents adoption, so we start getting ready to make this all official in the summer of next year. So, starting with the Existing Conditions Report. As I mentioned, we've done a lot of outreach for this land use plan update. And, you know, I should also note that the town, the town staff, has done a tremendous amount of outreach on their own in addition to the outreach we've done. But to give you a quick overview, so 376 individuals were engaged in person. So, these were folks that we, in some form, whether it be an interview, a workshop, we had one-on-one dialogue with them, got their input that way. 295 online survey responses. 908 unique visits to the project website. I think over 1,200 total website visits. And then, 173 map.social points created. So, map.social is our interactive, web-based mapping tool that allows an individual to kind of geolocate where the place that they have an issue or concern, or they might see an opportunity. So, the great thing about this is, from these data points, we're able to create a GIS data set that we can then share with town staff, and it can become part of their GIS system. And then, eighteen, in total, 18. So, of those 376 folks that we engaged in person, those were done through 18 in-person outreach events, 18 separate, unique events. So, there were several key themes that kind of came out of our outreach process. They include education, traffic congestion, access connectivity. So, those are two transportation-related issues. Image and identity, community spaces, and rapid growth. So, in terms of education, you know, this was a topic that I think was touched on at nearly every event in some way or another. Obviously, there's a lot of, with growth pressure comes the need to address, you know, some of your most basic community needs, and schools are a big part of that. So, I think probably the most prominent thing we heard was that Mooresville needs to plan for, you know, future capacity issues in the future. So, that means new school facilities. So, currently, only two schools within Mooresville's boundaries. Traffic and congestion, we learned the hard way that this can be an issue here. Just coming a couple miles from the hotel the first time. We thought would only take us about 15 minutes and took us about 50 minutes. So, we understand that this is an issue. And I think this is also an issue because much of this congestion is caused by folks that actually don't live in Mooresville. They're just kind of passing through. Access and connectivity, so I think these two are kind of interrelated. I think everyone would agree if you had more connectivity within the transportation system, some of those congestion problems would be alleviated. Then, image and identity, you know, this one thing we consistently heard was, you know, sometimes we don't, you know, you can drive through Mooresville and you wouldn't necessarily know you're in Mooresville. There's nothing that really sets it apart from the towns around it. And it's not for lack of community pride, but, you know, with rapid growth, you know, it's hard, without an established identity already, it's hard to just create one artificially. But this is something that will likely need to be addressed in some way or another in the land use plan update. It is being addressed already currently by the town. So, but definitely a big issue. Community spaces, another issue, also kind of related to image and identity. All of these are interrelated in some way or another. But, you know, where, a lot of places you can go and you say, well, you know, downtown, well, I'm from a town called Park Ridge, Illinois. And it was the hometown of Hillary Clinton, among some others. But we have this kind of iconic Pickwick Theater. It's an old art deco style theater. But everyone, when you say Park Ridge, where I'm from in Chicago, people say, oh, Pickwick Theater. But, you know, that's a area of town that everyone knows, everyone congregates. But where is that in Mooresville? Is it the Park West Shopping Center? Maybe functionally sometimes, but is that a true community space? Community gathering space? And then, finally, last but not least, rapid, rapid growth and the consequences of that. So, two of the issues, specific issues that came out of those discussions involved, you know, what is the impact on our open spaces? Or on our tree canopy? If we're just constantly in growth mode, maybe we need to press the pause button and start to think about what we need to preserve in terms of our natural assets. And then, the other issue that came out of that was, you know, lack of housing diversity, diversity in product type, I think. And this also relates to image and identity. If everything looks the same, how do you differentiate it from your neighbors? So, part of the Existing Conditions Analysis phase of this project, we are looking at some of your basic foundational demographic trends. So, that first chart on the left, first graph, you're going to, you know, you're familiar with that growth trend, I think. I did the math, and so from 1990 to today, you know, from a little over 1,000 to your current population level of, you know, 30, almost 30,000, that represents a compound annual growth rate of over 11%. That's a significant, significant number. And I was just, I was curious. So, I looked before this meeting, I polled the, and this is not apples to apples, I understand. But, you know, over that same period, Microsoft stocks' compound annual growth rate was about a little over 15%. So, you know, I think it kind of underscores the fact that this growth really truly is quite extraordinary. The other graph there on your right is households by income. So, you know, obviously, this is a fairly well-to-do community. You know, if you look at those kind of taller bars, they all group in the 75,000 and over household income categories. So, just, you know, a point of comparison. So, the median household income in Mooresville is a little over $87,000. So, if you look at just major municipalities, major cities in the U.S., so these are your New Yorks, your San Franciscos, Phoenix, Chicago, Seattle, there's only two that have a higher median household income than Mooresville. And those are San Francisco and Washington, D.C. So, little perspective there. Also, looking at race and ethnicity. Mooresville, starting with that pie chart on the left, Mooresville is a majority non-white population, quite diverse. The map on the right, so the lighter the color, basically, the more diverse. So, you know, geographically, you're even, your diversity is quite evenly distributed throughout the town, which, you know, I think that's quite impressive given development trends, given kind of some of the societal, historically, how we've kind of chosen where we live historically. So, I think that's a very interesting map. So, existing land use. So, part of what we do for any land use plan is we document the current land use of every parcel in the town. So, this is not looking at Google Earth or doing anything else. We literally drive or walk the community and look at every parcel and document its land use. I should note that this, both the chart and the map are not 100% accurate, probably about 99.9% accurate. So, this will change slightly, but not in any significant way. But the largest single land use you see there is that light yellow, that's single-family detached. I think that will come as a surprise to no one here. And then, I think the other thing to note there is that gray to the left of single-family detached, about 17% of your land is, could be characterized as undeveloped. And a majority of that land is within your airport overlay district. Next, I'd like to hit on some of the highlights in the Trends and Influences Summary Memo. So, the primary purpose of the Trends and Influences Summary Memorandum is to document some of the changes that have occurred in the last several years. So, since maybe you did your last land use plan. Obviously, the Existing Conditions Analysis, we're establishing the baseline of where we are now, but that's static. We're trying to look at some of the trends that have occurred over time. And so, this is informed by outreach, obviously. This is informed by our review of the planning work that you have done in the past several years, and you've done quite a bit of it. But obviously, in, when you're growing rapidly, you constantly need to shift and change and readjust kind of your plans as you go along. But in terms of land use and development, some of the key trends and influence that influence themes that we have noted include adjacent municipalities. So, what I mean by that is, you know, pressure, or maybe pressure's not the right word, but a lot of that residential-style growth from Cary coming north towards Mooresville's southern portion. And then, obviously, on the other side of town, RTP, you have development pressure moving south. That includes a lot of office and industrial. So, you know, the development patterns of both RTP and Cary have had a tremendous effect, obviously, on Mooresville. And as I mentioned, land availability. So, with this rapid growth, you know, we've heard a lot of concerns about, are we, are we running out of room to grow? Or actually, a lot of people said, we don't have any room to grow. And then, you know, related to this is the airport overlay, and actually, the airport itself, you know, what are the effects of the airport? But, you know, within that airport overlay, you primarily have non-residential uses because of the restrictions. And then, housing affordability, something we've also heard quite about, quite a bit about during outreach. You know, concerns about, what about a young professional or a young family? Or even the majority of folks who work in Mooresville? Can they afford to live in the community they work in? It is our understanding, though, that this is something the town is on top of and has allocated some funding for this fiscal year to start looking at an affordable housing strategy.
Just as a reminder, you need to hit the button for the microphone, otherwise, you're not picked up on the audio.
To repeat again, did anybody talk about using land use for commercial purposes? You know, entrepreneurs developing it as small-scale, you know, small-scale industries, or for that matter, be able to develop a startup culture that would kind of build the entrepreneurship culture within the town?
Yeah, we definitely heard some discussion related to non-residential development. I will say the bulk of it was about residential. But, you know, we definitely didn't have folks kind of, you know, shaking their fists saying, we need more office parks. But, you know, we've spoken with a diverse group of people, and we have met with some local business folks, people involved in the business community. And, you know, they've certainly, or they certainly discussed, you know, potential development of non-residential uses. I think a lot, most of their concerns were related to, how does, how do Mooresville's current development regulations affect things that the development community is looking to do? But yeah, good question. Thank you. So again, this slide here on the right, there you see the two overlay, airport overlays. These represent over a quarter of Mooresville's total land area. So, there's really no way around it. The overlay, the airport overlays are something that need to be considered in this land use plan update, especially in light of the fact that most of your undeveloped land is within an overlay. Another trend influence theme that emerged involved environmental features and open space. So, again, this loss of green space. You know, once you cut down trees, obviously, they can grow back, but it's more difficult for them to grow back when there's concrete on the ground. So, I think, again, this is something that the land use plan update is going to have to consider and plan for. You know, where do, are there certain areas of the community that we want to prioritize over others in terms of preserving forest land? And I think that's something we're going to get into in the workshop activity. And, you know, I'd like you to really, when we do that, to roll up your sleeves and say, take those markers out and say, look, this is green. No matter what, this must stay green. So, waterways, another key issue here. You know, you do have, in the reports, you're going to see an environmental features map, and that includes floodplain in there. And while, you know, floodplain is a small portion of land in Mooresville, there are still indirect effects. So, new development not in the floodplain can affect land in the floodplain. So, that's an issue here. And then, finally, parks, private parks, recreation and open space. So, Mooresville is unique in that most of it, what we've classified as parks, recreation, and open space is, you know, private access only. Most communities kind of, it would represent a smaller percentage. But a lot of that is due to the nature of Mooresville's development patterns, a lot of homeowners associations, subdivisions, et cetera. Not necessarily a bad thing. So yeah, here's this loss of green space. So, obviously, you know, there is a concern that, voiced by some, not all, that, you know, the worst-case scenario is that you have a town-wide deforestation. So, where naturally, this is a heavily forested area, I think the fear is maybe that one day, there'll be no trees, or you would never know that there were a lot of trees here. And it's something, every time I fly in, it's something, you can see areas, and I'm sure you've all seen this too, where it's just like erased, you know? So, again, something to consider here as we start preparing recommendations for the land use plan update. Next, community facilities and infrastructure. So, as I mentioned, during outreach, we heard a lot about education, concerns related to school facilities. So, you know, I would say, in short, folks said, you know, that we're happy with the quality of Wake County public school system, but we're not happy that our kids have to travel the distances they have to travel to go to school. And we would like to see a middle school in Mooresville. We would like to see a high school. And so, this has huge land use planning implications, because where do you put it?
That's, I was going to say, that's up to what Michio's. Do you have a preference?
So, I think I'm almost through the slides that are going over these two reports. So, I will, yeah, let's, if you guys don't mind, we can hold questions to the end. So, so again, yeah, education, one of the biggest issues in outreach. If, the biggest issue that I think came up during all of our outreach. Roadway extension, so again, I mentioned the connectivity issue and its implications on traffic. You know, I think folks were very pleased about the McRimmon Parkway extension. I think that will alleviate a lot of pressures. There were some concerns around pedestrian mobility. You know, obviously, parts of the town are not very pedestrian-friendly. Sidewalk connectivity is nonexistent in some places. And then, this additional facilities, obviously. Education, I think, schools is the biggest concern here. So yeah, as I mentioned earlier, you know, this community is going to continue to grow. Wake County public schools are already experiencing capacity issues. These are only going to increase. So, this plan, in some way, in one way or another, is going to have to come up with some strategies to deal with this capacity issue. So, then, image and identity. You know, this is something also that, you know, the town is currently working on a lot of this, and I'm sure you've seen a lot of this work. The gateway and signage project that's underway. The historic Mooresville crossroads area. You've seen some efforts to enhance some of those elements. But I don't want to skip that second one, community focal point. So, I think I mentioned that analogy of Park West is your, you know, kind of your town square, is that appropriate? Is that, does that fit who Mooresville is? Something that this plan must also address is, you know, how do we, how do we plan for a true community focal point? So yeah, I think this is from Spring Fest? Yeah, so this photo is from Spring Fest. So, you know, I think the residents of Mooresville enjoy being a part of this community, enjoy socializing with one another, spending leisure time. You know, could we find another place for this, though? A more appropriate, or a more permanent place for this type of activity? So, that was all I had for the presentation on these two reports. So, I think before we start the visioning exercise, any questions you have about this presentation, about what you read in here, I'd be happy to discuss those.
Hi. With the education issue, I understand the concerns, having a rising freshman and one of those kids that went to East Cary, which was a great school. But we've got a state law, state legislature that has very precisely defined what municipalities versus counties can do for schools and school districts. And so, it's something that unlike other states that, you know, it's like, oh, you want to put in 500 houses? Well, you know, where's the school going to be? We don't have that option. And even if we said this piece of land right here would be great, and even if we purchase it today, that doesn't mean that the school district and the county will accept that and build a school there. And so, how are we going to address, and a lot of it's education of our residents that... And so how are we going to address, and a lot of it's education of our residents that we have influence and we can attempt to influence the county and the school board, but that doesn't mean we're going to actually be able to build the school. Because we don't have that authority.
Right.
Given to us by the legislature.
Yeah, I think you're exactly right. You know, part of it is a educating the community on, you know, the, the way that state statute is set up, you know, but we certainly need to think about a strategy for addressing those concerns, I guess. And maybe, maybe it is just that. Maybe it is a kind of a community education effort. But I think it also can, I think it's going to be a combination of a lot of different things too. So if the concern is access to schools and getting there, then, you know, maybe let's start looking at how to make that a little easier on families and, and children attending these schools.
Sure. And of course, anybody I've talked to over the years, nobody likes to hear the, well, yeah, I agree with you, but we can't really do much about it because it's county and the state doesn't let us.
Right.
It seems like a cop out answer, but.
You know, and the other thing too is, while we might not have the authority, or we might not have the perfect site or sites today, that could very well change in, in five or 10 years. So I think if anything, the, the land use plan update needs to prepare for, for those scenarios.
But then, I guess my other thing that I've thought about and been concerned is if we say, well, in the future, this, you know, that what's, what used to be the old outlet mall.
Right.
That would be a great place for a, let's say, school, I know it's in the overlay district, or for a given land use. Well, there's existing landowners and a big, you know, a company owning a piece of land, that's one thing. But if all of a sudden you've designated my neighborhood, or if I, you know, was one of the few old time residents that has acreage still in land, I'd be like, well, I don't want to do that. And how does we go about making what we'd like to see as a town future versus private ownership concerns, as well as private ownership land rights?
Right. That's, that's the, that's the dilemma in planning, I guess. You know, that balance between, you know, private land ownership rights and balancing that with the community's needs. You know, you're, you guys are well aware of those challenges. Staff is obviously, yeah, I, it, it, it's a tough question. Addressing this issue is not going to be easy.
This is where I'm looking for, you know, the hundreds of communities you have advised on what are the options others have tried, or at least thought about, right? Because one thing is drawing a circle around a piece of land and saying, as she pointed out, is designated for X thing, right? The other part is, it really comes down to implementation. It's easy to plan.
Right.
It's easy to draw boxes.
Right.
But it's really hard to implement. And, and we have to think about, if not the minute details, but at least the pros and cons of a approach. We, we have to, I mean, to me, a plan without a recommended approach, it may not be a full proof approach, but at least A approach, or maybe A and B approach, i- is something we can take forward.
Right.
Otherwise, it, plan is just for the sake of plan.
Yeah, I agree 100%. So, you know, the purpose of, of this existing conditions analysis phase of the project is to establish that analytical framework, as Brad mentioned. So we will, the next time we see you, have, we will have started to formulate some of those recommendations related to how do you do that? And those, those recommendations that, that implementation plan, it is actionable. So it is a concrete, my, the litmus test for me is, if I gave this recommendation to staff, could they actually go out and do it tomorrow? Step one, could they do it? That's how you have to start. And that's, that's kind of how we try to formulate our recommendations and present them is as actionable steps where we can clear, you can clearly connect the dots between those steps and the end result.
I'll say, a lot of what I was going to mention was what Catherine talked about as far as the constraints upon schools and everything else. And I know that's, I mean, it is a big deal, but it's also, yeah, there's a lot more constraints. I had a couple of specific questions about, when you were saying diversity of housing stock, what, what did you mean by that?
So, you know, the majority of, of your housing stock is, is, is single family attached or detached. Only a very small percentage of it is multifamily. So a, you know, condominium unit or an apartment unit.
What you're saying is we don't have enough apartments.
I'm saying you have more single family homes than.
I mean, I, I don't necessarily agree that we have too many apartments, but that is a popular opinion that is held that we have way too many apartments. You know, and I guess that's where I had to rely on you. When I look at the numbers, I feel like, hey, there's, you know, 20% of this, 14% of that. I mean, it looks diverse to me, but I, I don't know what like the national averages or what we should be sort of, you know, looking to do. You know, to me, I'm like, wow, that looks like a great distribution, but I don't know if that's really true or not.
So I guess maybe to break that down a little bit, in terms of how you relate to, you know, other communities, I mean, I wouldn't say that, that, that your mix is complete, is atypical by any means. But I, I think mostly, a lot of this has, goes into the affordability issue.
And that's kind of what I was wondering, I thought, is what you were really kind of getting at with that was affordability, because you're right, affordability is not something that we have, especially in newer, you know, construction.
Right. So obviously, your entry, your points of entry into a local housing market are most likely going to be in a smaller, maybe one, two bedroom apartment type unit.
Well, I might have misunderstood it, but my understanding was that acreage wise, the most was single family detached. But percentage wise, 43% was multifamily. It didn't take up as much acreage, but it was 43% multifamily, of units were rentals.
Right. So, okay, you are correct. The, the majority of units, 43% are multifamily. And then single family detached is 33%. Single family attached is 24%. So the majority, or I'm sorry, the, what's, what's, the plurality belongs to multifamily, but the majority belongs to single family attached or detached.
So see Louie, you might not need more apartments.
Yeah, no, I, I, I probably did, I probably did misword that a bit, or mispresent that. You, there are a lot of rental units. It's not like there's only, you could say, well, there's only that one building, you know, on that side of town. It primarily, what I was trying to get at was the affordability issue.
The other thing was on the, the demographics, you had, you know, various different ethnicities or whatever. So on the, in the middle, you've got Hispanic. Where does that fit in on the circle chart?
So the way the census does, looks at that is, it's not attached to race, so that's why it's separate, you know? So yeah, Morseville's on the left there at a little over 5% compared to Raleigh at about 12% and Wake County as a whole at a little over 10%.
But I guess the Hispanic is really probably contained within the white and other, I would assume.
Yeah, I mean, it, I, I, I think technically we can't pull it out of whatever it's in, but it's somewhere within that pie chart. But I, you know, I will say that, you know, Morseville is, you know, in terms of its non-white population, you know, much greater non-white population than the Raleigh Durham area as a whole, and obviously much greater than the country as a whole. The country as a whole is probably around 70 some odd percent white.
So don't get mixed up, the colors on the left don't relate to the color on the right. Right?
In race and.
I was confusing it first.
Yeah, race and ethnicity are different. So just remember that, you know, somebody may identify themselves as Hispanic, but they may also identify themselves as white. So the two do not go hand in hand. They're very, they're different demographic measures.
So I have a question, or, and it's ultimately going to become a town debate, if you will. And maybe you can help us frame it, or you can cite other regions of the country where when I moved here in 2000, 2002, Morseville was a rural area.
Right.
And so I would be, and, and the whole, either the county or the triangle area was mostly rural with the exception of, say, inside the Beltway and, you know, the.
In 2000?
Historic, yeah, we, this was.
Yeah.
I had to drive to High House to get to a grocery store from just up the road here. So during this time, there's been a lot of growth in various types of industry, which I think is much better than, say, the Silicon Valley, which is where I came of age, where it's all one type of industry. It's great. But the whole, the area in the whole has gone to, from rural, suburban, and really the urban areas are migrating outwards. And, you know, we, I think this area now is just as big as the Charlotte area in terms of population, if now, now the, the sink of the population. And are we going to try to say, okay, we're going to stay suburban? Okay, like, cause, or are we going to go to the new urbanism? Is that what Ben used to call it? You know, walkable things? Or are we going to say, we want to keep green? Well, that means we've got to take existing land and build up instead of out. And how do we bring this up to the community and start opening a discussion? I'm not advocating necessarily one way or the other, but I think this is something that Planning and Zoning Board and especially Town Council is really going to have to start thinking about as part of its 10-year plan, maybe even five-year plan is, what's our line in the sand? And, you know, that could become our identity in and of itself, just because we take that, make that decision. And so, you know, you, from the Chicago area, and there's towns, and there's bigger towns and little towns, but I think we probably also hopefully can get some guidance from you as to, well, you know, here's what you could do in the future. And if you take this route, here's what might happen. And if you take that route, here's what might happen. And then getting our community to discuss this with, you know, educated discussions instead of, you know, rally flags one way and rally flags the other.
Right. Yeah, I mean, that's a, that's a great, a great comment because I think that's really the, the stage of the project now that we're moving into is, you know, well, what is that vision that we have? Are we a suburban community, or do we want to become a dense urban community? What, you know, what is our, our shared community vision? And that vision is based on, you know, your unique shared set of values as community members. And so, yeah, that's what we're going to start to get into tonight, is, is the start of that work, defining what, what is the shape of the future for us? You know, how do we want that to, to look?
Right. And I know that Chairman Pritchard and I have been around for many, many moons, along with Director Tanner, Ms. Tanner. And, you know, there, some of us have been around a lot longer, and I've been through one, or has it been two now, land use plans? And when we moved to the area, the land and transportation plan that my husband found on the, on the web was like, we're moving to Morseville because, look, they are, do have something. And we've changed it slightly over, you know, our focus over the years, but it's, it's been kind of muddled, or at least, you know, it's like, well, we're moving maybe, you know, but not a, here's what we really want our town identity, is I guess what you're talking about. We, we take pride in our historic areas, but is that our identity? Or is our identity that we're right smack in the middle and therefore, because we're smack in the middle, our housing's going to go up and the people, more people are going to want to live that close to the park? And so a landowner of a, like over, just on Davis Drive in Morseville Carpenter, we're talking four-story buildings to fit the people and the needs. And the next door neighbors are like, well, wait a minute, I don't want a four-story building there. Even with our current buffer regulations. And so that's kind of a valid point that I really would like to see our board address a little more specifically this round. And is, and then I guess also figuring out the next door neighbors that didn't want these four-story apartments, which are very valid, but they're technically in Cary. And Cary borders this on what, 642 sides? And so there's also inter municipality agreements in making people aware that they may live on what they think is a stubout and a nice dead end, but at any time, somebody could come in and with. but at any time, somebody could come in and with the piece of property next door.
I mean, I just would reiterate what you were saying earlier. And you, you folks are at a sort of policy crossroads for Morrisville right now. I mean, this, the last 2009 land use plan, we still had some wiggle room geographically into where things were going to, yeah, well, I was, that's right just before my time. I came here in 2010.
And you were like a, you were doing intern projects and making?
No, I was a guy named Noah, but yeah, we look alike, so that, I mean. That's, that's all good. But, but yeah, so, you know, now, you know, fast forward 10 years later, you know, we, Michio had that graphic, we was at 17% or so undeveloped land. A big point that he wanted to make was that a lot of that's in the airport overlay district. Yeah, that big chunk right to the top.
Can we put Google there or Apple there? Amazon in that big gray area?
Sure, yeah, those are allowable uses. So, so, you know, a lot of that's going to be opened up with this McCrimmon Extension. And we have talked about this in 2012. We have the McCrimmon Extension Development Guide, which I blew the dust off of, so you guys can take a look at that while you're doing your visioning exercise. But yeah, and just to reiterate, this is kind of, this is a big decision, game, game time decision for Morrisville. I mean, this might be one of the most important land use plans to ever happen here because this could, you know, you have basically, you said, two directions to go. Do we, how do we accommodate this development pressure, you know, from coming down from RTP, coming from Cary? And deal with that finite amount of land? Do we go denser? Do we, or do we kind of keep everything the way we like? You know, like, everything's fine now. Let's not worry, you know, let's worry about our current quality of life versus accommodating development? Or is there some sort of gray area in between where we can do both? So maybe three options there.
Yeah.
There's a multiple way to address this.
Mine's red. Ah, there we go.
So these are, and these are things that we love, we want you to keep in mind. We want you to keep in, when we do this visioning exercise, we want you to keep in mind housing preference, preferences of different demographics, what we're seeing nationally. Michio could speak a little bit to that, what he's seen in other communities. But, you know, what millennials are wanting versus baby boomers versus, you know, other generations. Commuting patterns. Do you want?
The basic question I was trying to, I think I asked you this question in the first time, right? Is when you ask people what are their current fears, apprehensions, et cetera, they kind of gravitate to the current pain, right? But I would be curious to know if anybody talked about what are their aspirations for the town, right? Where do they see, if they stay in the town 10 years from now, as you pointed out, what are their aspirations for the town? Because V5, 6, 7 can make something, right? But knowing what are the aspirations as a, as you did the surveys, what they are thinking about the town, might help us kind of think about what could be the various potential possibilities for us to explore.
So we've actually, we've been saving that question really for the next phase of the project, which is this visioning phase. And this, this is actually, so the exercise that, that you folks will do tonight, this is our first, very first visioning type of activity. We're also going to do this with the Town Council, and we're going to do it with the community as a whole. So the idea is, is we're going to ask that exact question. What are your aspirations for the town in the future? What do you want it to look like? What are the areas that we need to preserve, you know, to, to maintain our identity? What are some areas we need to enhance?
What I'm afraid of is when I look at your, you know, if you go back to your plan, I, I don't see a opportunity to iterate on these things. Like, we do it today, right? Next month, you will do with the council. Then you have got the community doing there. And let's say we all three are on three separate pages, right? I'm, I'm just making it up, right? How do you then come back and say, who are these seven and these seven up there? Who are these guys to make a decision for hundreds of people who are in the town? Right? In other words, what I'm saying is the town input kind of should drive a lot of what we might do. It's, it's going to be a hard decision because you're not going to get consistent opinions from them, right? So are we going to do, are we going to anchor our views, our visions? You know, seven plus seven, 14 people's vision on 35,000 people? Or, and then kind of tweak it based upon whatever inputs we get? Or are we going to do 35 and then go figure out how best can we accommodate their 35,000 views?
So I think, I think that, yes, you're exactly right. There are going to be several things that, you know, folks disagree on, several topics. And that's just unavoidable. But there also are going to be several significant things that you're going to find that folks agree upon. And the purpose of the vision, or the objective of the visioning is to really focus in on those points of agreement and plan, you know, plan based on, on those points, not dwell on the areas of disagreement. Because there will be, you know, you're going to coalesce as a community on a lot of different things. It's, sometimes it seems like that might be impossible. But that's why you are a community, because you do share a set of values. There are things that you agree upon. There are kind of shared aspirations that you have. And so we're going to focus in on those places where you agree.
For the interest of time, we only got a few more minutes, maybe for questions. But any, any questions specific to these reports or, yeah?
So a couple of things that I've been thinking about in relation to the land use plan and a lot of it centers around questions we've had recently, both at rezoning proposals, but also just in other, you know, discussions we've had. And I'd love to see a response on this, maybe as we get further into this. Something that kind of goes towards the, the objective of not just receiving community input about our situation today, but also, you know, in the reverse direction, educating the community. There are lots of questions around, okay, we have this development on the corner that's being proposed. Someone on the other side of town, who's not direct neighbor of that community, made a comment that having apartments in that location would decrease their home values. And it made me think, because that's one of the comments I heard. And I also heard the comment about, we don't have enough affordable housing. And, and from someone in opposition to the development being, being built. So a couple of questions I'd love to see answered, you know, one being, what kind of development benefits existing homeowners and their, their home values?
Right.
Right? Whether it be development around them or development in the town, but not necessarily directly beside them? How can they, as a citizen, as a homeowner, benefit from what's being proposed in a land use plan? Secondly, are there examples of some well-balanced communities that are high-growth like ours? Both population growth, but also job growth and reasonably high wages, right? And when I say well-balanced, I mean, you know, what are, what does a well-balanced community look like in terms of multifamily units, single-family units? And the ability for that community to kind of serve itself? For people in the community to be able to afford to live there, who work there, but also for people who live there because of the things it offers and work somewhere else to also have a place as well, right? What does that look like? You know, what are some examples, other awards that certain communities have won for that, right? And then in those communities, what does that look like, right? So some education around that for everybody. And then another question, why do we develop at all, right? What's the, what's the community benefit of turning any piece of land into something other than a piece of land? Right? And, and help, help us understand what that, what that community benefit looks like? What does it, what does it benefit someone who already lives in the town? I mean, why not lock it down completely, right? Because that's some of the, some of the trends we, some of the themes we hear sometimes when we have people in opposition to development. And I'm just curious as to what the facts state. If we can, if we can help, if there are facts either, for, for either argument, you know, have those in a place where we're educating the community on, on the benefits or non-benefits of certain types of development? So they can have a more educated role in the, in the process.
Yeah, and those are three great questions. And I think we're going to be able to answer all of them as we go through this, this process. You know, your first question about what kind of development benefits existing property owners. So I think we need to look at this more holistically. Ultimately, any improvements you make as a community, any improvements you make to this community through land use and development that are going to improve quality of life, can only help property values. You know, in terms of, you know, a home that is in a desirable community is always going to benefit in terms of property values from that being in that community. Obviously, when we get very micro and look at just very specific, you know, if I develop parcel A, what is the effect on adjacent parcel B? That's a little different. So we will focus on the bigger picture. And in terms of the second question, examples of well-balanced peer communities. So, you know, as you know, we're, we're based in Chicago. We do, we work all over the country. And so one of the things we've been able to do is develop quite a good database of, you know, best practices, case studies. And we always like to embed those into our recommendations. So if we're going to give you a recommendation, we're going to also show you, hey, it's been done successfully here. This is a community that 10 years ago was in your shoes, and now this is what they've done. And then third, you know, why develop at all? Another part of, of our engagement with Town Morrisville is preparing a fiscal impact analysis as part of this land use plan update. So, and it's a, it's a fiscal impact model, really, that the town can use even after we're done with the plan and we leave town. And so Town Staff, you as a group, Town Council can start to look at, you know, the, the dollars and cents implications of developing or redeveloping existing land.
Do we have any more last-minute questions or? Okay, great. So what we're going to move on to next is our actual work session activity. So basically, in front of you, you have a large black and white map. And I'm going to try to hold this as best I can. I don't know if we have actually a different kind of mic here, but. Yeah, it's more like a Game Boy type thing. But, um, so what we've done, since we're trying to break up Morrisville geographically into manageable chunks, we've broken it up into six different sectors, okay? And so what we're going to do is we're going to go from each sector, one through six, individually. I'm going to hand you a worksheet, and we're going to ask you three questions about that specific sector. So let me pull this up here. First question will be, what are some strengths and assets in this area? Second question will be, what are some challenges or weaknesses in this area? Third question will be, if any, what are some opportunities for improvement or redevelopment in this area? And we're going to give you about two minutes to answer each question, and then a minute to, if you want to jot on this map with markers, your thoughts. So we want you to at least write them down, and then we're going to have you maybe illustrate them on the map. So I'm going to start here in just a second by passing out Sector 1 worksheets. And if you have any questions at all, just feel free to grab me, and I'll explain this further. But we also have some other materials over here. We have the 2009 land use plan. We have the McCrimmon Extension, whoops, Transit Small Area Plan, McCrimmon Extension Guide, and then the Town Center Plan for, as our little library over here. I also have some supplementary 11x17 maps that are color-coded so you could kind of keep track of what sector we're talking about. So I'm going to, yeah, and I'm going to, if you don't mind, that'd be great. So we're going to pass these around, and I'm going to pass our first worksheet for Sector 1. I'm going to give you about seven minutes to fill this out. I also have pens, so let me know if you need a pen. Thanks.
Yeah, it's a lot of things to explain.
Individually, yes, individually, go ahead, take about six minutes, two minutes, any questions? And then if you want to illustrate your points in further with markers, please go ahead and do so. You need to kind of initial your little drawings so we know who did it.
Yeah, the, so the idea with, with the individual worksheets is this gives you a chance to document your own individual thoughts. So we'll collect these, obviously, at the end. And then the maps themselves, the larger format maps, are kind of collectively where we can start working on drawing some of these ideas out.
Go around the room, oh, this works good. We're going to go around the room after the seven minutes and kind of go from each board member and just hear a little bit about their thoughts on this sector of town.
And then, and also, so when, when you do mark up something on these larger maps, there's a color code key up on the screen there. So for instance, if you, if there's an area where you say, hey, this is something, an area we really need to preserve as, as green space or open space, you would mark that area in green. And so hopefully, by the end of this, by the end of the night, we'll have a very colorful map here. But definitely don't, you know, for the purposes of this exercise, don't limit yourself to, you know, things like, well, we've got to keep it legal. But, you know, if there's not money for something today, that doesn't mean that there'll never be money for something.
Yeah, this is all visioning. This is, you know, kind of big picture. We can get into the details later. We just at least want your thoughts. We just at least want your thoughts. So we got about a, let's see. Take another minute, if you, to write down your comments, and then another maybe minute, if you want to jot something down on the map to better illustrate your points, that's always helpful for us. We're going to, you know, any marks made on this map will take and record officially.
So some of you are still writing, but maybe we'll just start, work our way down. Want to start and just share some of your thoughts on Section 1 here?
So I said it has high-quality housing, yet it's still a reasonably dense use of the land, and it is close to employment centers.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
And then the challenge is it's a lack of diversity of housing and other uses. It's mostly all single-family. There's only one apartment complex. There's a little bit of office, and then there's one retail center, which is kind of on an edge. And because of the RTP and the lack of roads, there's not a lot of connectivity, say between, like Kits Creek up at the top and back down.
Right, right.
And then, you know, the best improvement I can think of is additional connectivity, because if you look, most of it's built.
Okay, great.
It's like you're furiously writing still.
No. I was just, you know, I was thinking, everything he said, plus, I think, you know, I'm looking at potential besides the challenges. I think there are two or two potential opportunities that I can see. One is to, you know, whatever green space is left, especially around the 540, along the 540 stretch, you know, it's a potential to preserve them as is.
Okay.
The two other potential I see is this open space, well, not open space, but the factory space, you know, in front of the cricket ground and along the McCrimmon Park here, this space. If we could use it instead of residential more, as I was pointing out, to, as a startup incubation facility.
Right.
What it would do is, two things, is it's close to the potential town center, but at the same time, it is slightly off, closer towards the RTP space and rest of the office space on the other side of 54. What it would also do is give us an opportunity to build, if you will, a lively community on the other side in this Section 3, which I'll talk when we come to Section 3.
Okay, perfect.
I know at one point, there was a plan to build a railway station there. I don't know what happened to it. Don't hear it anymore.
You're talking about this specifically?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that is currently our TOD area, our Transit Oriented Development area, because it's supposed to have development that's supportive of transit, so more dense walkable style development. We still do have an actual commuter rail station planned for that and/or a bus rapid transit station on the opposite side over here.
So still, my plan still works. My plan.
When I initially looked at Area 1, I, for me, I didn't think of the backside, what I call the backside of Harris, excuse me, Breckenridge area, that to me is kind of, you know, I look, the big area.
Right.
I think that this whole of Area 1 is probably got the biggest percentage of residents per piece of land, or...
Correct.
I mean, there's more resident, you know, it may be this is where most of the residents live. I don't...
They're two largest neighborhoods.
Yeah, exactly. Thank you. And there's some isolation up Church Street, and that is good in that we can send, I can, I can send my kid out and say, go ride your bike. He, we live just uptown Hall Drive by Cedar Fork, but one of his buddies lived up in Kit Creek, and he was, well, they went up Church Street because the bike path had too many hills. But, you know, it's reasonable, and I'm not too concerned that he's, whether or not he's going to come home.
Right.
Getting hit by a car in Church Street, that's an issue, but, you know, and especially up here, where it really is, there are some, you can't, there's one way in, one way out, and so it's safe.
Right.
And that's, has value to me.
So that's your asset that you...
Yeah. Now, on, you know, on the flip side of the coin, getting in and out of this, this big area, you've got Church Street, okay? You've, now that, it's nice that Kit Creek has finally been reconnected, and then you kind of meander through some townhouses with parking on the street to get north. And so, in my opinion, this could become a very significant public safety issue in terms of Church Street getting blocked off. Well, then, well, Kit Creek is a great connection, but it goes over 147, so we had a huge earthquake and that bridge collapsed, which, you know, is unlikely, but, I mean, there, it's very easy that, you know, I think there's 1,500, 2,000 residents up here, and they could easily get trapped due to the lack of connectivity, the closure of the railways, so you can't go out east anymore, as well as, I mean, I think most of the staff will say, yeah, I'm the one that raises the flannel for connecting, the flag for connecting neighborhoods and not one way in, one way out. And so, and a lot of these developments, when they've come through our board, I say, well, there's been talk of 147 and Town Hall Drive, what I call, I've always called it Town Hall Drive North. I'm like, okay, well, can't we put a sub out such that we can connect this Town Hall Drive North, so we have another way out? And some of them I've had success, and some of them not so much, and now the road's going another way. But opportunity in the future, I think, to find a way to connect further north with Town Hall Drive, and that, in my opinion, we owe it to our residents to make sure that they've got more than two and a half way out, two and a half way out...
Okay.
By car. And I think it's also, would be very, what I'd love to see is more interaction with the park foundation, because there's the chunk of land between Davis Drive and our Area 1 that there is some building, and they, there are, there are some industries and constructions, but, you know, maybe we could get a, you know, that might be an area that, for a school. You know, because this, there's big, and yes, there's talk about Parkside Elementary, but the middle school and high school is, you know, we got elementary is pretty well-covered, mostly, but really, yeah.
But they just sold a piece of land to us for a school, like they're beside Parkside.
For...
In June, some, undetermined school.
Undetermined. Is that the elementary, or is that...
Next to the elementary, there is a school open.
As a reminder.
For either middle school or high school.
Okay, that the county has purchased. So, but I think also, we could and should work with the park for, you know, green spaces or connectivity schools.
Okay, great. Yeah, I mean, so far, you know, like, all these issues, very specific, obviously, to just this Area 1. So that's what, yeah, that's what we're getting after. All right.
Just to reiterate a few things, strengths.
Yeah.
You'll hold it for me. Thank you.
Allow me, and I'll make sure you spoke.
Okay, so some of the strengths and assets, I said, were plenty of residences, which I, single-family, I like, so that, I like that. The Superfund site, I thought, was a challenge. I know this is scheduled for TOD, but my other question was, can it be used for anything else? And then, of course, a concern or challenge would be preserving the green space in here. There's not that much, but, of course, somebody might say, we could stick a house there. So that would be my concern with that.
Okay.
So the strengths, proximity to RTP, several planned communities with amenities, opportunity for redevelopment of some form of the Superfund site. Challenges, some of the communities are hemmed in by the railroad and 54, and Kits Creek is basically bisected from the town by 540. Opportunities, as already stated, the McCrimmon 54 Superfund site, as in the Transit Oriented Development Area that we've already identified. And another opportunity is to take over even more RTP land.
Yeah.
So repeating, I think, some of the strengths, the well-developed and planned communities with varying-sized homes, townhomes, you know, smaller towns, I'd say, some apartment, all the way up to bigger homes. The close proximity to work centers, and I actually think there is a reasonable amount of close proximity green space because of the good job RTP does with putting a lot of green space around their offices...
Right.
...the way that they develop land, and will develop land in the future as well. Challenges, not very walkable at all, but there's nothing we can do about it now, because they're already pretty much 100% developed.
We could do targeted improvements, for sure.
Yeah, so I think, yeah.
So something you would like to see, even if it seems infusible?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think the center there at Chappa Hill and McCrimmon is a great opportunity to be, to potentially put like a North Hills-like attraction center there, which people in these communities can get to probably reasonably well, especially with a little bit of transit help. And I would say the connectivity is also a challenge there, just connectivity to the work centers, connectivity to the retail and schools in the area, because there's only a few in and outs of both of these sections of 1. You know, I don't know that there's much we can do about it at this point. One of the opportunities is, I would say, Lewis Stevens Connector. I know it's planned. That's probably the biggest connectivity option there for the lower part of 1. And then, like I said, the North Hills-like, or some other big attraction center that we could turn into that whole quadrant of Chappa Hill and McCrimmon. I think all four sides there could, could work cohesively to make something that's really amazing.
Right.
But we got to plan it right, so. Excellent. So we're, I'm going to come around, collect these from you. Michio's going to pass out Sector 2, and we're going to repeat the same exercise. No, you don't have to put your names on them. That's fine, yeah, and these, we have it all on audio, so we'll be fine.
Trade you. There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
That was all? Okay. Okay, clock's starting. Looks like most of you have something written down, so we're going to take maybe another minute and hopefully you can wrap up your thoughts here.
So I think we're on Area 2, and so we have four more to go after this. So in the interest of time, we're going to just kind of adjust the format a little bit. So obviously, everyone write down your thoughts, because we will collect all of these, but instead of just going through everybody, what we're going to do is, so for each section, if you have particularly strong feelings, like, that you'd like to share with the group, please share them. And so we'll have time, maybe a couple folks... And so we'll have time, maybe a couple folks for each section, and that way we'll get through these a little quicker. So, any volunteers, anyone, yes?
Always wanted to speak my mind here. It's been a big area boom in terms of challenges. One is gonna be balancing the businesses, the corp, you know, companies that do business, and then housing and services. So if I worked in one, in one of these up in Perimeter Park, I wanna go to lunch, I get my car and drive. Now, of course, in August, I'm not gonna walk anyway, but the other, I think even bigger than that is Chapel Hill Road. It sounds like you drove down it.
Right.
And you drive south from, you know, you, you don't go to the Walmart at 4:00 on the afternoon to do your grocery shopping and then, because it's gonna take you an hour to get home.
Right.
And it's, that's, yeah. And the airport overlay. But I think there's a lot of opportunities for improvement and redevelopment. The Sam's Building, you know, and some of the acreage up in Shiloh Village that
Okay.
was planned, but has yet to appear. And the other big one for me is the old outlet mall area.
Right.
It's right there at the freeway. If you're getting off the airport and you're coming in, that's the first thing you see is this abandoned outlet.
Right, right.
And that really could be a cornerstone, I mean, that's where I thought they should've put the IKEA, but they don't ask me. But a cornerstone to say, you've left the airport, welcome to the area.
Welcome to Morrisville.
Hey, welcome to Morrisville. Forget the rest of the triangle, you're in Morrisville.
Or front door, yeah.
Yeah, and, and we've had several attempts to do some redevelopment, and I haven't had enough visibility to understand, you know, what the failures were, the plan.
Right.
Okay. Do we have any more, yeah, redevelopment, vision-related stuff?
Just a quick question. This area behind Wake Tech, mostly green now, and this area that looks like a drainage pond.
That's a pond, yeah. So that, that actually is part of Wake Tech's campus, let me come around for you, and I wish. Yeah. Yeah, perfect. And that is a pond, correct. Any other big picture ideas, any, you know, since we're, like Michio said, we're kinda speeding through these a little faster. Really what we're after, again, this is a visioning session, so like any, like the third question's really where we wanna hone in on your input, so.
Yeah, I think, I think that, you know, especially this area, given that it already has lots of businesses and commercial, I think it is ripe for high-density walkable communities. Yeah, high-density walkable communities.
Okay.
Because, you know, a lot of people who may want to live there are looking for opportunities to kind of, as she said, just walk up to the businesses, walk up to their offices, and do what they need to do.
Great.
And that may be one area, one of the themes to exploit.
Perfect, that's a great visioning suggestion. Anymore?
Thank you. I don't think we should forget that it's a great tax base.
Tax base.
You know, this diverse commercial, and even in a times of recession, not all of those businesses, we hope, will go out of business. So that's a good tax base, which many towns don't have. I'm wondering, in terms of opportunity for redevelopment or improvement, those commercial buildings are very underutilized at weekends, for example. So there ought to be some way that we can take advantage of that for possible walking events, or biking events, or those sorts of things. And lastly, with Wake Tech being there, we've lost a lot of the tax base, because Wake Tech doesn't pay tax, but that should be something we should be able to take advantage of. There's a, there's a tremendous draw there, and I don't think as a town, we're making much of that.
Perfect.
Yeah, so I would add, you know, as an opportunity, in conjunction with that quadrant of development, that one portion there would be right beside Wake Tech. And, you know, to have some incentives, or some sort of stimulus around kind of a startup innovation center for students, companies, come together, build off something like American Tobacco Campus, you know, to some degree, where they have a lot of incubation office space there, that's been dedicated for that. Yeah, I think that's a great opportunity there. And in addition to that, as I think has already been mentioned, there's a lot of office space there, incentives or something around the, whatever land is still undeveloped, I think there's a couple parcels there that would be potentially undeveloped, but putting some more, you know, places to eat. I saw a couple articles recently of some companies that decided to move to this area. They didn't choose this area, they chose just north of here. And they chose that versus some office space they were considering there, because of access to, to walk out their office door and go to Page Ridge Grill, some of the other places right there, you know, in the vicinity of the office itself, without having to force people to get out and walk, right?
That's a huge, a huge part of the decision-making process for where, you know, companies locate.
That was in an article, you said?
Yeah.
Yeah, if you don't mind forwarding that article to us, that'd be great.
Do you know who still loves a campus? Apple.
So we're gonna move on to Section 3 here, just a few minutes to do the same thing. We're, again, we're, once wrapped up, we're gonna just really focus on that third question, that envisioning question, so we can kind of get to the meat of the issue here. So I'll.
And if you do respond and speak up, some, most of you did a really good job, but really, it should be no more than like 30 seconds, you know, hone in to the exact topic, so that we can make sure we get through all the activities this evening.
We're gonna go ahead and wrap this up soon.
And so if, if, if you're ready, you know, feel free to, to start out. And again, we're just gonna try to focus on, on that last question, obviously fill out everything. You know, anything you ever thought on, if it applies to the first two questions, fill it out, but really focused on that visioning. So, you know, if you're ready to share, by all means.
Have at it.
Have at it.
I just said, you know, obviously, we've got the downtown cores kind of on the edge of that, and then, of course, up down Church Street, you know, we've got a swath of smaller parcels, which is part of the problem, because they're all individually landowners, and they're all not very dense, and it's literally right beside downtown, but there is a potential that that could gradually change as, as land values increase.
Okay.
I should also point out, this aerial's 2017. Since this aerial was taken, there's actually been a fair amount of development activity north of the town core area, lots of townhome projects, actually, two fairly substantial ones, so. But yeah, same, same area.
Since I live on Church Street, I can see the parcel at the intersection of McCrimmon and Chapel Hill, and a potential airport boulevard extension could come in, you know, within that parcel. You could develop that as a sports hub, with the T-20 cricket coming in and exploiting the cricket thing.
Right.
You could actually develop that area into a more, looking at our population and where it is heading, you know, develop it more as a sports hub that can be exploited for commercial purposes, and as well as attract people to come to the downtown and that place to, to enjoy various activities that they do, right? And, and you could also, at the same time, develop part of it as a more community hangout place with lots of restaurants and those kinds of things, which kind of serves the commercial opportunities near, in the Section 2, near the parkway, as well as the community living around the town.
Okay, great. Member Willis?
I like that idea, but at the same time, I do not want to alienate Triangle Brick at the corner of McCrimmon and Chapel Hill Road. They've been here longer, very long time, good business, but they have big trucks, and so we gotta, you know, I brought this up with the road overblades, like, we gotta make sure those trucks can get in there. I think the biggest area really is between Church Street, the railroad, and a little bit less between, to Chapel Hill Road, I think most, I think it's, what, the old Belk Site? And there's a fair amount of land there.
What would you like to see, that, do you have a vision for what kind of development?
How about a high school?
High school.
Middle school, I mean, you've got Cedar Fork Elementary on, okay, you can't get to it from Church Street, but it's right there, and then on the other side, you know, up Church Street, and that then gets a lot of people. The other thing I'd like to see is airport connected all the way through, and that means right through my neighborhood and up to connect to Davis, but I think that's an important connection.
Great, great.
What they said.
Ditto, perfect. Thanks. Member Pritchard, or Chairman.
Have nothing different, actually.
Good, great. No, this is.
So, I mean, again, along the walkable nature of this, the Town Health Center, I think we need to re-invision a little bit.
The town, the what?
The Town Center.
Town Center.
And I think, you know, it really can complement what happens there at the Transit District with another walkable section here on the, on the south, southeast end of that Section 3. When you have these neighborhoods that have been so planned and well-developed for so long, but are only residential, you know, adding those more walkable mixed-use developments on both corners there actually makes them very, very conveniently walkable all of a sudden. And I think, you know, you would service the whole area by giving them something they can go to pretty easily.
Right.
If you, if you took advantage of those two spots, I think that would really transform the town in a good way.
Yeah, and Town, you know, to your point, Town Center Plan 2007, so lots changed since then, so definitely worth looking at again.
All right, excellent. So we're, we're halfway there. I just wanna say that this is exactly the type of feedback we were looking for, this kind of area-specific visioning feedback, so definitely keep, keep it coming.
Yeah, so we're gonna take a few more minutes, do Sector 4, and we'll wash and repeat, or rinse and repeat, I guess. All right, we're gonna take another minute or so. Okay. So while you guys are finishing up, let's hear the sort of visioning third question answers here. Any, anybody wanna volunteer some first, or you?
So one of the things I was realizing, this is very sort of similar to Section 2 in a lot of the aspects, it has land, it's got more land, it's, it still has airport overlay, so that does restrict us quite a bit. You know, I do think we have maybe the ability to get a little more higher-quality development there than like the single-story stuff that is constantly, currently in Southport, hopefully.
What do you mean by higher quality? What exactly you?
Higher, better use than just a flex building.
Okay.
My opinion, or warehouse, which unfortunately, I think that's what it's developing to be, and it's, given the current landowners, is probably what it's going to be, but it would be nice if we could get, maybe, maybe the closer the Town Center, you know, there's some of those residential parcels there, they're, of course, also separately owned as well, but maybe there's a chance for some density there as well, kind of just the other side of the Town Center, even though it's a little bit further away, but it seems like the more natural place to have a little more concentration.
Okay, excellent. How about you?
I guess I'm, similar thoughts, but three ideas of potential land use. One is, as you pointed out, high-density housing, again, with walkable features and businesses associated with it. Potential use for school, if, if there is any. I, I think this is, this area could be developed something like the tobacco farm landscape, you know, so that.
Tobacco farm landscape?
When I say tobacco farm landscape, I meant to say, like in Durham.
Oh, the American Tobacco.
The American Tobacco kind of space.
Next office.
Makes of offices, restaurants, you know, sporting facilities, kind of gives you a, you know, as you, as these, it kind of falls at the two main intersections into the town, kind of gives you a, has a potential to give you a higher appeal to that space.
Great.
I see number four is being in one of the.
airplane noise or not, because growing up by an airport, you just, you forget about it, yeah.
I put down, I would really love to see from aviation to sunset on both sides of Chapel Hill, if we could just acquire those eyeshores, do something low-density there, maybe a park, because they're really, they're horrendous.
You said aviation to Chapel, okay, so that's strip.
Yeah.
Down here, okay.
Mm-hmm.
Got you.
All right. Thank you.
That's the strip with character, Harleen.
I hate that.
But I think, pretty close to that, I think there's some affordable homes right now and it would be, I think it'd be good to try and preserve some of those areas around Green Drive.
Okay.
As an opportunity, I'd like to see greenways and trailways extended through Area Four so that you could get from Lake Crabtree up to Area Two.
And Three.
And Three.
Right, right.
Elsewhere.
Great, great, thank you.
Yes, for the southwest corner, you know, again, that mixed-use Town Center, updated Town Center Plan, I think would be great there, you know, connecting them all, maybe some under, under-highway, under-road transportation, something to allow people to get across some of the thoroughfares we have. For the undeveloped area of recreational attractions, something to bring in, you know, allow us to host tournaments or, you know, things that, some sort of mixed-flex space of some sort like that, there's a lot of hotels nearby, you know, especially along towards the airport section of that. A school space or convention center, I think all could be hosted there pretty, pretty easily and, and again, bring people into Morrisville to stay here, not just pass through to some extent.
Right, and you mentioned earlier, you know, what are, or you asked, what are, what are other communities doing like Morrisville? One thing we've seen quite a bit across the country is multi-use sports complex to attract, you know, regional visitors, because, you know, I think a lot of you would agree with me and know it very well, people will travel for their kids' sporting activities.
So, I mean, I know we have the volleyball center coming up, but for basketball, the closest place you can go for something like that is Greensboro.
Really?
Yeah.
Wow.
So, yeah.
Yeah, definite opportunity.
Being like the Greensboro Coliseum?
Yeah, they have a bunch of schools and flexible, like five court, six court spaces in that area, and so they have a lot of basketball options that are easily, you know, rented out for tournaments there.
Is the hockey thing, that's still going, right? The Lake County whatever, okay.
Yeah, I mean, but you should, given the, I was looking, going back to the population diagram.
Right.
There are so much opportunities for Asian games like badminton, table tennis, they're growing like anything.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, they require less space than any of the other games and you can, you can build tall, but you don't need to build horizontal.
Right.
All right, so let's, let's go ahead and get started here while they finish up. Start over here, yeah.
Radical thought.
Radical thought, perfect, here we go.
Keep, keep the entire Section Five untouched.
Untouched, so dip it in carbonite, like Han Solo, just don't.
I mean, most of Section Five is already developed, right? There are maybe two pieces, two or three pieces of land.
Okay.
One is across the Davis Drive and McCrimmon intersection, or sorry, Morrisville Carpenter intersection, that we have been debating all the things that you already heard about, and the one across from, is it Walgreens or was it Bagman's, right? Where there is potential opportunity. I would rather keep them as greenlands where people can go and, you know, very much like a, what's that New York thing called?
Central Park.
It's a central park, right? Kind of create a central park.
So you're suggesting that the town pay commercial prices for that land and turn it into a park?
I, hey, money is no barriers for creative thinking, right? So, I'm just, I'm not saying that who pays for it.
Just following directions, isn't it?
Yeah? I'm just saying, hey, convince the property owner to donate it to the town and make it into a.
Yeah, as a property owner.
Let me tell you, tell you about this offer I have for your house.
Everybody has a price. I'll donate your house while I'm at it.
Everybody has a price.
Anything else, Kevin?
Yeah, so I think that the really big challenge in this area is the north-south connectivity, and as controversial as it's been, I really believe in connecting Town Hall Drive to Sterling Green as another avenue, you know, way for people to get north and south. The big field across the way, which I believe is under private ownership and not yet purchased or not purchased by the town.
Yeah.
That's probably the largest floodplain in town, and that's going to be a area where it, you know, we're not building, but at the same time, that would be a great place for a community green, more cricket fields.
You're talking about where the number five physically is?
Yeah, right across the street.
So, yeah, that, you're, if you look at your, actually, you got the map right there from one of the reports, yeah, it shows.
Some of Six, too.
I mean, it's a huge.
Huge chunk of it, you're right.
Isn't that area, the, one of the reasons I didn't talk about that was, I thought that area was designated for the Gurudwara to go in, go in. Haven't they purchased that area?
What?
The, across from the town hall, I thought the Gurudwara, the Sikh temple, I thought they bought that land and that's where the Gurudwara is coming, isn't it?
It's actually in Area Six.
Sikh temple.
It's in Area Six.
It's called the Gurudwara, so.
He said six.
Yeah.
That's in Area Six.
Right.
Oh, that's in Area Six?
Or is it?
I thought that was across from here, maybe not.
It is, it's just technically on the six, on the edge of five.
But, yeah, to, to Member Willis's point, it is definitely a challenging site to develop.
Let's use it for public, open space benefit, I mean, that's the biggest benefit, is we can, you know, we put on a, you know, minimal set of restrooms and, okay, we know it's gonna get flooded, so we designed the building to drain out a little easier.
So recreational uses.
Yeah, recreational uses that don't have too many structures that could bring people into town, but also lend support to the Town Center, you know, it's just a jump, you know, Scott, you know, real short distance to get up to this Town Center that we want to build and have some small businesses and services.
Perfect.
This, this is where your ideas from San Francisco could come in.
Yeah, yeah.
I just put down, in addition, maybe a little tiny bit more commercial development in Morrisville Square, because there's still room for that and it's, yeah, right, little bit, control.
Perfect.
Okay.
This is close to home, Peter.
But not apartments.
Thank you. All right, so anyone else on, before we move to Section Six?
I was just gonna say, me, along the floodplain area, I mean, in places like Asia with dense development and flooding problems like monsoons, they're able to, you know, cement in those areas, make them, you know, accessible for the flood needs, but also into some sort of flexible park space around them, sometimes you're using, you know, a lot of concrete, but, but if you do it the right way, I think you optimize where the water goes and you can control it somehow. I think thinking about that, or at least looking at it, studying it, would be interesting to see what we could do connecting up to Crabtree to make that space more consistently, reliably usable, such as the park around Cedar Fork, this section here as well, if we potentially turn it to a park, just studying that would be interesting.
Right, yeah, definitely a design challenge, but it's something that design, it could be a design solution, so, okay, great.
Thank you.
Rob, that is entirely possible. They go out in California in the Central Valley where they actually have soccer fields that are, they know that on those few times it will flood that it's not usable, but that is something that's totally possible.
Well, we got one more left, and a few minutes, we'll close the exercise out.
What's the house called?
Pew House, yep. Right there. All right, well, go ahead and get started, looks like you're all squared away, so you can get a start if you like.
The only thing I put down really was the possible expansion of the Crabtree Nature Preserve.
Okay.
By Key Bridge there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Great. Member Willis?
So, I forget the name of the shopping center, but I'm gonna call it the Food Lion Shopping Center.
Park Place.
Park Place, thank you. I'm really pleased with how Park West has come out, and, but at the same time, the Park Place, I don't want to say it's deteriorated, but it certainly hasn't thrived and expanded and, and I remember the developers of Park West saying, oh, well, it's a great opportunity for redevelopment, was kind of their answer. I, so I'd like to see something not, I mean, it could be a brand-new something, or, you know, it could be just improvements to the existing strip mall, but a really, I mean, Park West has shown that it's gonna be a serious competitor and something going over there is not really going to be able to be successful in terms of breaking into the market, so I think it needs to be a compliment. I'm really pleased with how Park West has come out and, but at the same time, the Park Place, I don't want to say it's deteriorated, but it certainly hasn't thrived and expanded and, and I remember the developers of Park West saying, oh, well, it's a great opportunity for redevelopment was kind of their answer. I, so I'd like to see something not, I mean, it could be a brand-new something or, you know, could be just improvements to the existing strip mall, but I really, I mean, Park West has shown that it's going to be a serious competitor and, yeah, something going over there is not really going to be able to be successful in terms of breaking into the market. So I think it needs to be a complimentary use.
Okay.
Sports facility or something like that. I don't want to see housing.
So it's maintain commercial use, complement.
Commercial, um, you know, you know, we talked, we've talked about sporting facilities or something that could take up, you know, could be something en masse that takes up.
Okay.
But, and I think a big challenge for this area as well as Area Five is fire department access.
So emergency service.
Right, so more, they gotta, they gotta come down from Station Two, God forbid there's rush hour, if Station One isn't necessarily, you still have to get over the railroad track to get down there, or you go around Davis Drive, and so response times are much slower and I think that we, that these residents deserve and businesses deserve a better fire department access, you know, connecting that road, fix a problem.
Make sure anything, any development existing or new is adequately served by fire and/or other emergency services.
Yeah.
So I sure would have loved a little backup when we were talking about Crabtree Crossing Extension. Tell you about this meeting the counseling, the council is having on Tuesday.
Anything else?
Got four suggestions.
Yeah, four, okay, great, Sierra.
The Pugh House.
Pugh House?
Pugh House area.
The one we moved?
The one we moved.
Yeah.
It's been, in my view, of the way it is right now, is a sore point.
As a sore point?
Well, simply because it has not been upgraded.
Oh, okay.
And it needs to be made, you know, we need to perhaps put time into making it into a museum and the surrounding area needs to be uplifted so that, you know, it kind of makes that entire surrounding, you know, much more pleasing and kind, and especially with Town Hall being so close to it, it, it kind of gives you the identity that you are in the center of Morrisville.
Sure.
Right now, it, it doesn't feel like you are in the center of Morrisville, right?
So finding a purpose for that land in that historical home. I know we, we recently demolished Ben's Bargain Barn, which was, yeah.
I mean, I would like to see the fire, the current, the old firehouse demolished as well, and at least, you know, that entire area.
Cleaning it up.
Redeveloped into something that is, kind of uplifts this entire space to, to be the center of the town, right? The other one that is another sore point is the commercial building along the Key Bridge Drive, that has been mostly a dead building, you know, maybe one restaurant, so as soon as you cross the railway bridge.
Okay.
Sorry, the, the bridge over the.
Oh, the little strip mall.
The little strip mall on the side, you know, maybe we find a better purpose for it and, and make it more attractive. To support his point, connect Crabtree Crossing all the way to Town Hall Drive.
Come on!
I, I have never been opposed to that idea. I was not there when, when it was voted for, right? And by the way, I don't have voting rights either. So I can make up all the good ideas if you like. To, to her point around Carmike area, I think, given all the traffic challenges within the triangle area with people trying to get to RTP.
Right.
Or to other places where businesses are, I'm a firm believer, I don't like the suburban concept, I would rather have businesses move to where people live.
So more mix of uses, horizontal.
Some mixed use, kind of if you convert that area in, from basically, there is a big shopping complex on the other side, right? And, and that Carmike area, if you could convert that into, into business communities where, you know, offices could be there, like a perimeter park, right? Then you kind of also reduce the traffic going into the park and other areas, but at the same time, it becomes an opportunity to spread the traffic and business opportunities closer to residential.
So I, let me make sure I'm clear, so having residential closer to their place of work.
Having places of work closer to residential, not the other way around. Because what the current suburbia model is, put the businesses in one place and have people drive in.
Right.
Which is what is causing the problem with RTP downtown and other areas.
We call that Euclidean zoning, where you have like very specific, like this is only this and this is only this.
Yeah, I mean, those.
Kind of let's mesh them more.
Well, well, that's the only way to kind of reduce the challenges you have, right? And, and this kind of spreads and, you know, people can move to where the businesses are. It becomes difficult when you have an RTP where you don't have residential places, so you have to live around RTP, which is another reason for boom of Morrisville, because people want to be close to the business and not spend two hours in traffic.
Sure, right, great points, thank you, that, that was excellent. Anything else?
I'd like to jump in right away. Sanjay, the area is called the Rural Heritage Park, it's in our town center plan. And, and that, it would be lovely to see that actually come to life. And then, kind of the opposite of what you were just talking about at the Food Lion area or the Carmike area, as you call it, I think that's next to Kerry's planned transit station. So maybe that's an area that we look at for another transport or transit-oriented development area. And change it into maybe that's where you have some high-density housing and it's at a key location which would serve people who could then, we hope, use the rail up to RTP or the rapid bus, rapid transit.
It could also make use of Park West across the street, right? So instead of being a competing and floundering area for shopping, it could, it could even be something that boosts what's already there at Park West, complements the transit. And even, even to throw in there some office opportunity as well, I think that would make a lot of sense too, for people during the day to use Park West for lunch and things like that, which, which Park West doesn't really have much of in terms of office space around it right now, other than little shops, you know?
I, I will say, throughout our engagement process, especially when we went to Springfest and went to Movies in the Park, Park West was referenced as like an idea, like a great thing to work towards in terms of development that people wanted to see, the more walkable, like kind of destination-oriented type of commercial development. And it was very controversial, but. That was market forces.
The time I go to Park West, I can only think about the fact that it could be way better than it is now and it's a huge missed opportunity and we're going to just continue to have missed opportunities because no one will stand up for what they really think.
This is why I have the issue with, you know, anchoring in today's landscape and trying to think. That's, that's what leads to all the fear coming into, as opposed to saying, you have a blank slate, not think.
That's kind of what we're asking you to do though, we're, we're thinking, you know, big picture visioning, so this, we're about eighteen minutes past the target time of finishing this, but the good news is we got an excellent amount of information, Michio was just telling me earlier, like this is exactly what they needed. So, thank you so much for.
Yeah, just one more thought, right? Since we were talking about the Pugh, the rural, sorry, heritage center, right? Just across from the railway line where the Cotton Drive, that entire, in a fifty-four intersection.
Yeah.
Which is, I don't know whether there is some commercial coming in or not, but that's another sore point in the triangle, in the Morrisville area, so I would think that's.
It's the gateway to our town center.
Well, that's what I'm saying, right? That entire intersection needs a huge uplift from where it is.
Okay, great. So Michio's going to wrap up this whole work session here, I think he's got a couple things he wanted to just go over.
Yeah, just, real quickly, so, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna wrap up the existing conditions analysis as well as the trends and influences summary, get those fully vetted by, you know, you, get, make sure we collect all your comments, get comment from Town Council, that document will be finalized, put up on the website, and then we move into the vision and goals. So this is that question you were asking, how do we kind of coalesce around some, some shared ideas for, for what we envision our future to be? And, you know, we'll be getting into that next month, starting next month and through the fall, and then we get into that second question that I heard a lot, like what's the answer? So that's when we start developing these recommendations for how we implement some of these shared ideas. So, you know, that was all I had for you tonight. Again, I appreciate, I echo what Brad said, we appreciate your time, you really did put the work into the work session, so that's great, we, we got a lot of good stuff to go back to the office with, so we're excited to continue pushing forward on this, so thank you.
I would recommend for the visioning workshop, if you could look at the design thinking model, that would really help, because these ones kind of help, but when you have design thinking workshop kind of plan, the way it works is very interactive and helps you get lots of ideas and common thoughts.
Yeah, and we discussed it this morning, we're definitely exploring ideas on how to, to really best, most efficiently gather community input in terms of visioning, so, yeah, we're looking to do some kind of innovative things, so.
Thanks everyone, thanks for coming out, we really appreciate it.